Good evening. Prior to beginning tonight's meeting, I would like to take the opportunity to introduce you, School Board and those in the audience, a group of students who have been meeting at the Board's direction. We created a student advisory this year, and these are juniors and seniors from our high schools. And we would like them to introduce themselves. In the very near future, you will see some of them at the table, at the Board's request, to be part of the School Board as a student participant. And so what they're going to do is they're going to walk over to the podium, say their name and the school that they currently attend. And Board members, if you just want to say hello to them as they walk by, we won't make you go down because then you'd have to come back up. They're going to share their names and what school they're from, and then we'll begin our meeting.
I'm Brandon Rice with North Fort Myers High School.
How you doing?
I'm Austin Young from Astero High School.
I'm Natalia Camargo from Atabaker High School.
My name is Megan Marigan from Cypress Lake High School.
My name is Megan Wong from Lehigh Senior High School.
Quentin Armida from Riverdale High School.
I'm Katrina Katskevich from Mariner High School.
Good evening. My name is Chandre Bhatay from Eastlake County High School.
Good evening. My name is Kenesha Farah from Dunbar High School.
Do you want to pick? Yeah, we can do a picture. Okay. Go ahead. Okay, if we want to do a picture, Mr. Spiro, could you get them up here? Is Sue in here? Yeah, there she is. Okay. She comes. Okay. You all can just stand right in front of the dais if you like. Yes. Just come around in front of us, that's fine. That's it. All right, we can stand?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We just had quite a conversation, and as we all know, kids know a whole lot more than we know sometimes, so this is going to be exciting. Good evening. It is a pleasure to welcome you to the November 19th, 2013 School Board Meeting. It is 6:05 PM, and this meeting is called to order. Pursuant to Florida Statute 1001.371, the Superintendent acts as Chairman until the organization of the Board has been completed. At this time, we request all cell phones and/or pagers to be turned off or put in the silent mode. As is the custom of the Board, we will begin the meeting with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Dozier will lead the invocation, after which Mr. Armstrong will introduce this evening's presentation of colors, and then lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. Please bow your heads.
Dear God, we thank you for the opportunity to gather free here at this meeting of the School Board of Lee County this evening. Please bless each one of the people that are present here, for whatever reason they came. Bless each of the students that are demonstrating already that they are interested in what goes on in the realm of public education. These young students, please guide them to continue to be giving back to their community. Demonstrate ways in which they can do that. Dear Lord, we also ask that you guide the Superintendent as she brings forth all of her recommendations this evening. Please guide each and every Board member as we have our discussions and give us the wisdom to make the right decisions concerning every issue that we will face tonight. We pray that this meeting will be successful, productive, and blessed. We give you the glory for what we will accomplish this evening. Amen.
At this time, please welcome Colonel Rodney Scott Robertson, Senior Army Instructor at Fort Myers High. Colonel Robertson will introduce the cadet presenting the colors this evening. Colonel Robertson retired after 29 years of military service with the United States Army National Guard. He served in various assignments during his career, including assignments as an aviation battalion and a group commander. He is a veteran of Operation Enduring Freedom. This is Colonel Robertson's second year as JROTC instructor in the district.
The national colors will be presented by Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Diana Arrez, Battalion Commander, Greenway Battalion, Fort Myers Senior High School, JROTC. Diana is a senior and a brilliant student. She is an IB Scholar with a weighted GPA of 4.6. The last two years, she has played high school soccer and is currently involved in Rogue Kappa and sewing for the Cure. She has participated in the JROTC Raider Team, in the Drill Team as Team Commander, the Color Guard, and on the Marksmanship Team as Team Commander. Ms. Arrez is involved in all aspects of the Greenway Battalion and has earned the highest rank and leadership position there. Her future plan is to pursue a nursing degree at the University of South Florida. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As I stated earlier, according to Florida statutes, I will act as Chairman until the organization of the Board takes place. Before continuing the meeting, however, we would like to present, as is tradition, a plaque to the outgoing Chair, and in this case, it's Ms. Fisher. So Ms. Fisher, we appreciate your service and congratulate you on a successful year's chair. According to School Board policy, the Board follows Robert's Rules of Order. I will accept nominations for Chairman, after which the Board will vote. Then I will accept nominations for Vice Chairman, followed by the vote. Nominations do not require a second. I will then make a recommendation for the establishment of dates and times for the Board's schedule of action meetings. I will now accept nominations for Chairman of the Board for the coming year. Dr. Graham. Ms. Dozier.
Yes, I would like to put Ms. Kathleen Morgan's name up for recommendation for the chairmanship, and I would like to express why I'm supporting this recommendation. A Board needs to demonstrate trust, respect, professionalism with each other, and work as a cohesive unit in order to be a high-performing team. This type of leadership is in the best interest of the children we serve and the community that we serve. As a Board, we need to set an example for others to follow, and this begins with the Chair. During her short tenure on the School Board, Ms. Morgan has demonstrated her ability to work well with others, her professional work ethic, and her ability to be thoughtful and respectful of others at all times, no matter what the situation was that she was involved with. She has confirmed the knowledge of her role as a Board Member and the position. She has clearly demonstrated that she understands what Board Governance is. Ms. Morgan has validated her interest in growing as a Board Member because she has participated in many Board Development opportunities. In fact, I believe that she is very close to becoming a certified Board Member. We have some very crucial issues that we will be facing in the coming year, which will affect this community for years to come. We need a person who can pull us together as a team. Solidarity will be important. We showed solidarity when we selected Dr. Graham as the Superintendent, and I imagine this has played a very major factor, with the community in accepting and embracing her completely from the beginning of her term. Dr. Graham laid out the four agreements and has asked her staff to honor these, and she wanted to share them with us last week at our pre-reorganization meeting, so that we could all be on the same page and honor them as well. Those four agreements are: Be impeccable with your word, take nothing personally, assume nothing, and always do your best. I believe that Mrs. Morgan demonstrates each of those. When we met last Wednesday for our pre-organization meeting, Ms. Fisher said, and I quote, "To be effective, we have got to be on the same page, work as a team, and try to move in the direction that we really need to go in order to be a world-class school system." You also said that change was constant and inevitable. You also expressed that it is very hard to put the past in the past because we are all humans and we are driven by emotions, but in order for us to move forward and upward as a team and to start the healing process, we must leave the past in the past. Ms. Fisher, you also articulated that each one of us will do what it takes to make the things happen, and for Dr. Graham and us to be successful for our community, to feel included, that we need to put the past right back there. Don't look back and just keep moving forward. If you are impeccable with your word, then there is really only one clear choice this evening, and that is to support Ms. Morgan. Ms. Fisher, last week, you said you did not know who you wanted to support at the time and that you had made, not yet made, a decision. Well, the time has come tonight, and I urge you to support Ms. Morgan for the students and for the district and for the benefit of this Board. Mr. Armstrong, you also made the statement that you had made a personal observation that there were some things that had been said in the past, and even by yourself, that were not always the nicest and a little derogatory at times, but that it is in the past and we need to move forward in a positive direction. Take whatever happened in the past and leave it there. You also said that you hope that all of us can move in a positive direction. You also said that we need to look in front of us. The only person at this table that has demonstrated pure professionalism, their willingness to listen without judgment, and that has shown and demonstrated respect for everyone at all times is Ms. Morgan. Ms. Fisher, Mr. Armstrong, and Mr. Scott, each of you have verbalized the need to move forward and leave the past behind us. Well, the only way that I can see us doing this is by putting Ms. Morgan in the chairmanship position. If each of you are impeccable with your word and you truly want to put the past behind us and move forward in a positive direction, Mrs. Morgan is the only clear choice at this time. She will move us forward in a positive direction as a team. This evening, I urge each of you to give Ms. Morgan your support as the Chair of this Lee County School Board. Thank you.
Ms. Dozier, are there any other nominations?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to nominate Tom Scott. He has shown in the past, when he was previous as a Chair, that he made strong choices at times, and being on the Board, it takes somebody who knows what's coming in front, who's been here for a while, to understand what's the issues, the problems that we're going to be facing. And although I respect Mrs. Dozier's words, and she is correct, I've, like I said, we need to move forward. We spend so much time, and it's like driving. If you spend all your time looking in the rearview mirror, you'll crash. We need to look forward and look through the rearview mirror, look through the windshield of what's ahead of us for the greater good of these students, and I feel at this time that Tom Scott would be the best to lead us in that direction.
Any other nominations? At this time, we will take a vote in the order the nominations were given. All those in favor of Kathleen Morgan as Chair for the coming year, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Second nomination, Tom Scott. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. I will now accept nominations for Vice Chairman of the Board for the coming year.
Dr. Graham, I'd like to nominate Ms. Kathleen Morgan.
Any other nominations for Vice Chair? Take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. The next item in the organization of the Board is to establish dates and times for the schedule of Board Action Meetings for the ensuing year. Agenda item 2A3, I recommend that the Board approve the calendar establishing meeting dates and times for the School Board Action Meetings for the period December 2013 through November 2014, as presented. Board members, is there a motion to approve?
Moved.
Okay. I'll just pick one. Moved by Ms. Fisher. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Scott. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. And gratefully, I now turn the meeting over to the new Chairman of the Board, Tom Scott.
Thank you.
And at this time, I would like to pass the gavel.
Just don't throw it.
The remainder of the agenda this evening is as follows: One recognition, one resolution, public comment, consent action items, which include one item under Executive Services, 11 items under Business and Finance, nine under Operations, one under Teaching and Learning, four items under Superintendent's Recommendations, one item under Attorney's Recommendations, and four items for public hearing, and four items for other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as the order of business?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Dozier, seconded by Ms. Fisher.
Second. Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. We'll now move to recognitions and resolutions, so if we can step down to the front, I would I'd like to invite the following students to please join me here at the lectern. As I call the names, I'd ask that representatives from the student schools also come forward. Michelle Cohen, Diplomat Middle School. Daniella Jiang, Lehigh Acres Middle School. Rebecca Neal, Lexington Middle School. Colin Miller, you can stay right here. We may want to do something. Colin Miller, Mariner Middle School. Brianna Joseph, North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts. Megan Brown, the Sanibel School. Allison Gant, Three Oaks Middle School. Hannah Shapiro, Trafalgar Middle School. And Miranda Persaud, Varsity Lakes Middle School. I'd also like Marshall Bauer and Beverly Burke from the Foundation for Lee Public Schools, and Mr. George Miller and Brenda Streblo from Cape 912 to come forward. I'd emptied about half the seats, didn't I? The Foundation for Lee County Public Schools, Cape 912, and the Lee County School District have partnered to support the teaching of the Constitution each year. Through their generosity, pocket constitutions were provided free to over 7,000 7th grade students to support classroom instruction in U.S. History classes. In Social Studies, Civics classes, students participated in an essay competition based on information in the Constitution. Each middle school chose the best essay to submit to the Foundation in Cape 912 for the competition. These nine students are the authors of those essays. We'd like to thank George Miller and Brenda Streblo from Cape 912, and Marshall Bauer and Beverly Burke from the Foundation for their support in the teaching of the Constitution, as well as the teachers and principals for supporting this important project. And of course, we want to recognize these students for their participation in the Constitution Essay Contest. I'm going to invite Mr. George Miller from Cape 912 to come to the podium and announce the author of the essay selected as the overall winner. I never know what to do with that. I need it, but I don't need it. As Tom said, in 2010, Cape 912 was the foundation of Lee County Public Schools. We successfully established a constitution, Classroom Project for 8th Grade Students as a pilot project at Diplomat School. Because of the success Cape 912 and the Foundation of Lee County Public Schools completed a program for the 8th Grade Students as part of their history instruction in public schools in the fall of 2011. The program has continued for the 7th Grade class in 2012 and again now in 2013. Students were invited to write the essay on the principles of the preamble, the separation of powers, and amendments of the Constitution. Cape 912 read all of the submitted essays, and we loved every one of them. Not everyone can be a winner, of course, but the overall winner of this year's essay Now, as you step forward, we would like to offer each one of you certificates of excellence from the School District and from Cape 912 and the Foundation of Lee County Public Schools. Miranda, you're late. You're last. Rebecca Neal. Hey, Rebecca.
Congratulations.
Miller. Colin Miller. Good. Brianna Joseph. Congratulations. And Megan Brown. Congratulations. Oh, okay. Allison Jiang.
Allison.
Okay.
Congratulations, Allison.
And your Hannah Shapiro. Go ahead, I'll have you call it off. I have one other thing I'd like to do. I'd like to invite Miranda to come to the podium and share your essay with us, please.
One of the five guiding principles from the preamble that has affected my life, my family, and my country very much is secure the blessings of liberty. To secure the blessings of liberty means to have freedom, to be able to make your own choices, opportunities for all citizens, and the right to speak freely. The word "secure the blessings of liberty" has a powerful meaning to both me and my family. If it were not for our great country and these powerful words, I probably would not have been here today. My grandmother grew up in Georgetown-Gaianna, which is located in South America. This country was in poverty, and the government was very corrupt. The schools were in poor condition and had very few qualified teachers. They did not have freedom of speech, and it was, it was, and still is, very hard to grow up. It was very hard growing up and making a living in an unprosperous place like Guyana. When my grandmother was growing up, there were massacres every day in Georgetown. During that time, the Afro-Gaiinese and the Indo-Gaiinese lived in Guyana and did not get along. Both the Afro-Gaiinese and the Indo-Gaiinese people wanted to control the country. However, since they could not come to an agreement on how to run the country, there was lots of violence and racial tension, which led to homes being vandalized and the innocent lives of adults and children being taken. This time was known as the 1969 Disturbance. My grandmother knew that if she came to America, she would have better opportunities for her children, my mom and her siblings, to receive a better education, and she would have a better lifestyle. So in 1983, she made the most important and most difficult decision of her life. She left my mother and her other two children in Guyana to come to America, hoping for an opportunity for a better life, in order to secure a job so she can afford to bring her family to America so they can have opportunities as well. When my grandmother came to America, she stayed with a friend in Brooklyn, New York. She cleaned people's houses for $2.35 an hour. After doing that for a while, she was able to go to school and receive her nurse's aid certificate. After receiving her certificate, she took care of the elderly. Nine months had passed, and finally, my mother and her siblings got a chance to come to America and finally be a family, receive the education they deserved, and have better opportunities. All of my grandmother's hard work has paid off because now she has freedom of speech and the right to do whatever she needs to do to make a living. The word "secure the blessings of liberty" have affected my life because these words are the reason why I live in the United States today. If my grandmother had not worked so hard or had not been so determined to come to America and have the freedom that she deserved, I would not be in such a prospering country. I probably would not have been born. I am grateful for these words that have made such a vital impact on my family and my life because without freedom and our right to do what we desire, I would not be able to speak my mind or live such a blessed life. Freedom is what makes me who I am. Without any rights or not being able to make my own decisions, I would be living a life under control. Also, having freedom makes me an empowered person. Since I do have the ability to speak my mind and do what I feel is right, I know that when I make a choice in life, that I make it as a liberated individual. Having freedom is what makes the United States of America so unique. As American citizens, we should know that we are very fortunate to be living in such a thriving country. Many people that live in other countries around the world cannot speak freely against their country or leaders. As Americans, we are privileged to have freedom of speech, which gives us the right to speak freely without government interference; freedom of religion, which gives American citizens the right to practice their religion freely without government disturbance; freedom of press, which allows Americans to publish news or information on option opinions without government interference; freedom of petition, says that people have the right to gather signatures in support of a cause for...
That was incredible and amazing, and another proof positive that our future is in good At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Mike Burston, Director of ESE, and Ms. Rachel Taylor, Learning Resource Specialist, to join me at the lectern. National Inclusive Schools Week is an annual event sponsored by the Inclusive Schools Network and Education Development Center to highlight and celebrate the progress of our nation's schools in providing a supportive and quality education to an increasingly diverse student population, including students who are marginalized due to disability, gender, socioeconomic status, cultural heritage, language preferences, or other factors. The week also provides an opportunity for educators, students, and parents to discuss what else needs to be done in order to ensure that their schools continue to improve their ability to successfully educate all children. This year's theme, Authentic Inclusion: Increasing Our Comfort Zone, focuses on how schools are continuing to contribute to the development of a more inclusive society through action such as ongoing participation in social inclusion projects, formalized peer support programs such as the People First Language Initiative, sensitivity awareness workshops, and lessons in disability history and awareness. The Lee County School District recognizes the accomplishments of its personnel and community members who have dedicated time, labor, and resources to promote inclusive education for all students. Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of the resolution proclaiming December 2nd through the 6th, 2013, as National Inclusive Schools Week.
Motion, second. Second, Mike Dozier. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose the like sign. We are doing it.
Thank you.
Dr. Graham and board members, we have one speech that we split into two parts. This Inclusive Schools proclamation represents good timing as our school district is preparing to assemble a team that will participate in the best practices for inclusive education assessment and process with the group from the Florida Inclusion Network. This process will identify and prioritize critical areas of need to facilitate inclusive practices in schools where all students with disabilities achieve to their highest potential and enjoy a life of meaning and value. Rachel Taylor, who is right here with me, the ESE Department's Inclusion Specialist, will say a few words. She's our go-to person for inclusion, a true supporter and cheerleader of inclusive opportunities for students. I want to note that Rachel, along with our parent liaison Donna Giriff and ALC Principal Ruthie Lohmeyer, worked with the Florida Inclusion Network to develop the best practices for inclusive education assessment indicators and process that will be used across the state of Florida.
Genuine, real, bona fide, and true. These are the words that are synonymous with authentic. Authentic inclusion: Increasing Our Comfort Zone is this year's national theme. In our district today, there is much evidence of genuine efforts put towards responsible inclusive practices. Inclusive education is now recognized as a precondition for closing the achievement gap for students with disabilities. Current areas of growth in Lee County include increased social and academic opportunities for students with disabilities to participate alongside typical peers, both in and out of school. And natural friendships often develop, so that's what we want, just for it to be natural, because it is, should be. And more and more students with a wide range of disabilities are being viewed through a lens of capacities rather than through a lens of what limitations they may have. In other words, collaborative stakeholders such as teachers, students, parents, are focusing on finding out what students can do and building from there, and this bodes well for increasing our comfort zone. Thank you.
before we start the balance of the meeting. We'll start back very quickly, but if you feel the need to leave, or the passion to leave, now's your opportunity. For the students, Jeff. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Martin, would you please address this agenda item?
School Board Policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda, or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted that to me before the meeting began, you'll be called in the order of the card submitted. If you did not submit a card but still wish to address the school board this evening, the school board chair, Mr. Scott, will provide you an opportunity in a moment to express that desire. The rules concerning public comment to the school board include the requirement that any speaker who is just to address the school board to endorse a purchase of a product or a service in which the speaker has a personal interest, the speaker must reveal that interest before making comment to the board. The school board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the conclusion of public comment time, the school board chair may address concerns raised by speakers, or may assign responsibility to the superintendent to do so. The time allowed per speaker is three minutes. Mr. Scott, I have one card this evening.
Is there anyone on the right side who did not turn in a card but would like to speak? On the left side. Mr. Martin, please call the first card.
First speaker is Mr. Marvin Getz.
My name is Marvin Getz, and I'm the president of Lee County Substitute Teachers Association. Members of the board, Dr. Graham, I speak to you this evening on behalf of the Substitute Teachers of Lee County School District. I'm here to urge your support in securing a wage increase for your substitute. It has been many years since we have had a pay increase. I believe it goes back to 2006-2007. Yet this year, all your other employees of this district have received a pay increase. Why are substitutes considered second-class citizens? Since the substitutes do not have a union, and we have no bargaining table, we depend entirely on the board and the superintendent to treat us openly, fairly, and honestly in our efforts to secure a wage increase. I do not have to tell you about the state of the economy over these last few years, and I well know the comparable model that the school district uses to determine a substitute salary. But the real question is, do you want to be a leader, or do you want to be a follower? When we're comparing school districts and the role of a substitute teacher, do you want quantity, or do you want quality? I have raised the level of professionalism among the substitute teachers, among the highest in the state. They need to be paid for it. A good salary schedule serves as an incentive to becoming a future substitute teacher, and at the same time, rewards those substitutes who have provided long years of service to this district. So I ask you, please, to consider us as partners in education.
Okay, the lady in the left-hand section. You'd come to the podium and identify yourself.
Lori Fahey. And I see that on the up-for-vote tonight is the exceptional student revisions on that. And I just wanted to ask that, I think that you've made provisions for children that are severely disabled, but it seems that children who have mild disabilities, for instance, like dyslexia, are left out. If they don't pass the FCAT, then they need to take remedial classes, and they may not get a degree. They may not be able to graduate. I hope that you'll look at that and try to find a way to help those kids, too. The certificate of completion is not much good for anything. So I'm just hoping that you'll look at that. And as always, just to consider the FCAT, the high stakes that it holds on all the children, especially this year with the Common Core. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll next move to approval of action items in the agenda under consent. I'll ask board members if there are any items they would like to have pulled for further discussion. Ms. Fisher?
No pulls this evening.
Mrs. Dozier?
I have none, thank you.
Mrs. Morgan?
I have none.
Mr. Armstrong?
I have none.
And I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent action items?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Dozier, second by Mrs. Morgan. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 5-0. Next item on the ESE is superintendent's recommendations. Dr. Graham, would you please report your first item? It would be 6B.
I recommend approval to piggyback Lee County Board of County Commissions Quote Number Q110171.
You'd come to the podium, and identify yourself.
Lori Fahey. And I see that on the up-for-vote tonight is the exceptional student revisions on that. And I just wanted to ask that I think that you've made provisions for children that are severely disabled, but it seems that children who have mild disabilities, for instance, like dyslexia, are left out. If they don't pass the FCAT, then they need to take remedial classes, and they may not get a degree. They may not be able to graduate. I hope that you'll look at that and try to find a way to help those kids, too. The certificate of completion is not much good for anything. So I'm just hoping that you'll look at that. And as always, just to consider the FCAT, the high stakes that it holds on all the children, especially this year with the Common Core. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll next move to approval of action items in the agenda under consent. I'll ask board members if there are any items they would like to have pulled for further discussion. Ms. Fisher?
No pulls this evening.
Mrs. Dozier?
I have none, thank you.
Mrs. Morgan?
I have none.
Mr. Armstrong?
I have none.
And I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent action items?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Dozier, second by Mrs. Morgan. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Next item on the C is superintendent's recommendations. Dr. Graham, would you please report your first item? It would be six B.
I recommend approval to piggyback Lee County Board of County Commissions Quote Number Q 110171 awarded to Sam Galloway Ford Incorporated for the period of November 19th, 2013 through June 9th, 2014, for the one-time estimated expenditure of $608,335, with an option to cancel if deemed to be in the best interest of the district. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all related documents.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Fisher, support by Mr. Armstrong. Any discussion? I guess I've got a question. Are we moving to an exclusive line of manufacturer vehicles in the fleets so that parts and so forth might be a little easier to obtain?
We are in the process of replacing our fleet with that intention. This particular expenditure will, the vehicles will go to transportation, food service, and maintenance.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Armstrong?
Just one quick comment, and again, I need to say this publicly. Dr. Graham, I do apologize for not asking the questions earlier before the meeting, but thank you so much for giving me the information on this.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, a like sign. Motion carries five to nothing. Item C, please.
I recommend approval of the Insurance Task Force Recommendation to Award RFP Number R 137121GN for Flexible Spending and Health Savings Account Administration to Wage Works at the estimated annual cost to the district of $95,000, as indicated on the tabulation sheets for the five-year period beginning April 1st, 2014 through March 31st, 2019, with renewable options for two additional two-year periods upon the written agreement with the vendor and the district, and authorization for the superintendent to execute all necessary documents.
You've heard the motion. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Fisher, supported by Mr. Armstrong. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, a like sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item D, please.
I recommend approval of the Insurance Task Force Recommendation to Continue the Two Existing Medical Plans 5773 and 3769, with no change to the current rates indicated in the table provided in the board action item, with an expected annual cost to the district of $63,800,000. I further recommend approval for the plans and rates to be effective from April 1st, 2014 through March 31st, 2015, with authorization for the superintendent or designee to execute related documents.
You've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Armstrong, second by Ms. Fisher. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, a like sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item E, please.
I recommend approval of the Agreement with Humana Dental Insurance Company, Comp Benefits Company, to provide group voluntary dental insurance to school district employees and their eligible dependents for the period April 1st, 2014 through March 31st, 2015, at no cost to the district, and authorization for the superintendent to execute all necessary documents.
Heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Dozier. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Morgan. Mrs. Dozier?
Dr. Graham and I have had conversations around this issue. I will not be supporting this issue this evening. In fact, I can't remember exactly what the date was, but on numerous occasions, we were, we had quite a few people, teachers, and some support staff, that actually spoke to us about the dental insurance. And in fact, it was, it was, there was so much controversy around it that we then decorate, we directed the superintendent to do an audit. And we had the county do an audit, because we have a local, inter-local agreement with them where they could do audits for us. And they returned findings, and the findings against Humana were extensive, that they had basically misled the district when the RFP went out. And I remember that we had discussions on numerous occasions around here at the board, and, you know, while this is no cost out of the district pocket, it is cost from our employees' pockets. They have given us a guaranteed rate for two years. However, in order to have any decent insurance, you had to select the higher insurance anyway, instead of the insurance rate that would have been competitive with the previous vendor that we used. This board, in fact, I specifically remember Mr. Armstrong saying something around the nature of, you know, even though we're not paying for it, it's, you know, our employees are paying for it, and that you thought that we needed to direct the superintendent to, you know, to put an RFP out on the street. In fact, when this was actually presented to us back a couple of weeks ago, or a month ago, or whenever it was presented, at that time, I said, you know, this was, you know, this is unacceptable, because I feel as though, as a board, we made a pledge to the people that we would do something about it. This is more of the same, therefore, I will not be supporting it this evening.
Any further discussion?
Just to clarify.
Mr. Armstrong?
And I'm sorry. She's correct, and, but that was the very first time that Delta Dental and Humana was both brought to us, and I thought that we needed to do an RFP, because there was flaws. And then it came back that both companies misrepresented themselves, and, you know, I hurt too many conflicts with the other company from different employees, too. So, right now, I understand that we're liable by the contract, and I will support this tonight.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one. We move now to board attorney recommendations. Mr. Martin?
Yes, Mr. Scott, board members have one recommendation this evening, which is adoption of the superintendent's evaluation form. The employment contract entered into by the school board of Lee County with Superintendent Dr. Nancy Graham provides that the school board has the authority to adopt the goals in the evaluation form by which the superintendent shall be evaluated. At its October 22, 2013 briefing meeting, the board discussed adopting the attached form for use in evaluating the superintendent's performance, which is the Administrative Performance Assessment Instrument. So this evening, I'm recommending approval of the adoption of the attached Administrative Performance Assessment Instrument as the form under which Superintendent Dr. Graham shall be evaluated pursuant to her employment contract with the Lee County School Board. This is the first step in this process. This is to ensure this form is in place for the next evaluation. As the board has directed, the form will be incorporated in the policy in time where we've begun that process, so that it'll be used with this superintendent and all future superintendents.
You've heard the attorney's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Fisher, second by Mrs. Dozier. Any discussion? Mrs. Dozier?
This is actually a quality instrument, and what it does is, it gives board members the opportunity to rate the superintendent on daily, the daily performance of the superintendent, such as, it's the assessment for leadership performance, for information analysis and performance, strategic planning performance, consumer focus performance, human resources performance, management performance, and results performance rating. This basically gives us the opportunity to identify strengths with the superintendent, whereas with the, with the goals, we really didn't have the opportunity to do that. This is an instrument that we have used in the past with superintendents. It was a quality instrument, and since we are, have the quality initiative here in this school district, it is a, an instrument that is a, that was a quality initiative put together by the superintendent's staff years ago, and it is all-inclusive, I think, of just about everything that the superintendent does on a, in a given week, in a given day, in a given year. And it gives you a brief snapshot of the performance, and it gives us the opportunity to give kudos to the superintendent, and, and actually, we can, you know, write comments on the strengths. For instance, if there's a particular strength that the superintendent is performing highly at, you know, we should write a comment and, and, you know, give her kudos for that, because I know one of the things that, that the media always, they, somehow, they've got it on their calendar, you know, it's kind of like a birthday. They've got it on their calendar, and they always say, "Have y'all done the superintendent's evaluation yet?" And they want this document. So I will wholeheartedly be supporting this this evening, and I urge all of my colleagues to do as well.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, a like sign. Motion carries five to zero. We'll move now to public hearings, and before we close the regular meeting and open the public hearing, I'm going to ask Dr. Graham to present her recommendations for this evening's public hearing items.
Do I start? I recommend you approve adoption of Policy 2.28 Charter Schools as amended. The effective date of the adopted rule is November 20th, 2013. I recommend you approve adoption of Policy 5.37 Alcohol, Drug, and Tobacco-Free Workplace as amended. The effective date of the adopted rule is November 20th, 2013. Approve the adoption of the revised plan for student assignment as submitted to facilitate educational improvement, satisfy parental demand for choice, create diverse school enrollments, and manage growth equitably. The effective date shall be November 20th, 2013, for the 2014-15 Plan for Student Assignment Revision. Approval of the Revised Exceptional Student Education Policies and Procedures Document for the 2013-14 through 15-16 school years to reflect revisions in Florida statutes, state board rules, and district policies and procedures. The effective date of the adopted rule is November 20th, 2013.
Thank you. We'll now recess the regular school board meeting and open the public hearing. As indicated, the public hearing this evening is to consider only the following: revisions to Policy 2.28 Charter Schools, update of Policy 5.37 Alcohol, Drug, and Tobacco-Free Workplace, revised plan for student assignment, and the adoption of 2013-14, 2015-16 Exceptional Student Education Policies and Procedures Manual. At this time, the public will be invited to speak on these four items. The time allowed for comment is three minutes. Is there anyone on the right who wishes to comment? On the left? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and reconvene the regular school board meeting of November 19th, 2013. Dr. Graham, please restate your recommendations for this evening's public hearing items.
Approve adoption of Policy 2.28 Charter Schools as amended. The effective date of the adopted rule is November 20th, 2013.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Dozier, second by Mr. Armstrong. Any discussion? Mrs. Dozier?
I'm just going to discuss one time for all of them. We have workshopped all of these extensively, and board members have had the opportunity to provide any input in any of these policies, whether we needed to change it, tweak it, or whatever. I will be supporting this, as well as all of the other policies this evening.
Thank you. Other observations? Move to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, a like sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item C, please.
Approve adoption of Policy 5.37 Alcohol, Drug, and Tobacco-Free Workplace as amended. The effective date of the adopted rule is November 20th, 2013.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by?
Mary, Ms. Fisher.
Ms. Fisher. Any, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Item D, please.
Approve the adoption of the revised plan for student assignment as submitted to facilitate educational improvement, satisfy parental demand for choice, create diverse school enrollments, and manage growth equitably. The effective date shall be November 20th, 2013, for the 2014-15 Plan for Student Assignment Revision.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms., Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Dozier. Any discussion?
I said I wasn't going to speak, but it's a woman's prerogative to change her mind, so I'm changing my mind on this one. I'd forgotten that this one was here. This is our student assignment. I will wholeheartedly be supporting this this evening. And, Dr. Graham, to you, I will say, I look forward to seeing a schedule, and we are going to go out with the community with a calendar, with our town hall meetings, so that we can explain it to the community. And have you done anything as far as reaching out to, like, the Realtor groups to try to give them presentations of our student assignment plan?
We were, we were waiting for this approval. Ms. Chandler has some things in place to get to, like, groups. Okay. And I'll be talking with Mr. Scott about working with you all with your calendars to get those town hall meetings scheduled. The purpose will be twofold, not only to explain what we've changed this year, but to talk about future options with the student assignment plan.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, a like sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item E, please.
Oh, sorry. Approval of the Revised Exceptional Student Education Policies and Procedures Document for the 2013-14 through 2015-16 school years to reflect revisions in Florida statutes, state board rules, and district policies and procedures. The effective date of the adopted rule is November 20th, 2013.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Fisher, seconded by Mr. Armstrong. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, a like sign. Motion carries five to zero. We'll move to other business, board member comments and/or reports. Mr. Armstrong?
You know, normally, I get kind of winded. I think I'll keep it very short. I have one thing I want to read, and, actually, I found this and thought of Dr. Graham.
Oh, dear.
Don't worry. It's good this time. Imagine there's a bank account that credits your account each morning with $86,400. It carries over no balance from day to day. Every evening, the bank deletes whatever part of that balance you failed to use during that day. What would you do? Draw out every cent, of course. Each of us has such a bank. Its name is time. Every morning, it credits us with 86,400 seconds. Every night, it writes off as loss whatever you haven't failed to use and invest wisely in a good purpose. It carries over no balance. It allows no overdraft. Each day, it opens a new account. Each night, it burns the remaining of the day. If you fail to use a day's deposit, the loss is yours. There is no drawing against tomorrow. You must live in the present on today's deposits. Invest as so as to get from the utmost in health, happiness, and success. The clock is running. Make the most of every day.
Thank you. Mrs. Morgan?
First of all, I'd like to thank the student reps. It was a great meeting, and it's nice to hear you speak up and speak out, so, thank you, and I look forward to working with you all this year. I went to visit Royal Palm this past week, and also, ALC West. I've been to ALC Central, and, and I see tremendous opportunities, and I, but I also recognize that some of our resources are not being utilized the way they need to be utilized. And so, I would like to add to my list of things that we are briefed on. A request that we have a briefing on alternative learning, and a five-year strategic plan for alternative learning that integrates all of the programs, and gives us a chance to look at the continuum, the gaps, the resources, the opportunities. So, that was my observation from that visit. I had the opportunity to sit in a meeting at Benita Middle School between Benita, the city of Benita Springs, and the staff from Lee County School District. Benita Springs, as it turns out, has put money in their budget to do a beautification project on this Terry Street in front of Benita Middle. At the same time, the school district was working on a plan to improve security and safety at its entrance, and we sat down and realized that if we combined the resources that the individual entities were willing to commit to their project- that the individual entities were willing to commit to their projects, that we could actually come out with a far superior product that met both the city's needs and the school district's needs. And that's the kind of thing I've been talking about. We need to do more partnering with our other public entities, because we do have opportunities to make our dollars go further if we explore opportunities to partner with our political partners. Oh, a week ago Sunday, there was an article in the news press talking about the impact of school choice on athletic programs at the high schools, and I would like to ask the board to visit that issue, either in a workshop, probably in a workshop would be the best way to do it, because I am interested in the issues raised by the news press, and as a new board member, I'd like to have an opportunity to discuss that. Also reported in the news press recently was a an article about a an agreement between Edison and FGCU to create a continue, a contract, for an educational continuum for a specific area of expertise. And that made me think about our conversation at the last meeting about the fact that we spend five million dollars a year for OTs, PTs, and people providing special services to students. And I would really like to see us explore long term, and this would obviously be part of a strategic planning process, the same idea where the the school district, our career centers, and our technical schools partner with the our educational partners to explore some of these career alternatives that we are not currently exploring, but represent a real career demand in Lee County and represent really nice salaries. So that throw up that observation. Oh, and do we have somebody to do, Mr. Armstrong, do we have somebody to do sustainability?
No.
No? That's it for my comments. Thank you.
Thanks. Mrs. Dozier.
Yes, thank you. Well, it was a pleasure being with this student group, and it's it was such an appropriate day for all of you to come and meet with us today. Some of you have had to go home, the ones that were over here have left, but we actually had a conversation earlier today at a briefing meeting, our workshop, where we talked about a student advisory committee that met with board members. And years ago, we used to do that, and I am encouraging and urging my fellow board members to consider us putting that back in place, because one way for us to keep our pulse on what is going on in the schools is through all of you. Today, all of you had some very interesting topics that you shared with us, what was going on in your school, and that's our way of working with all of you. You know, one of the things that we we didn't touch on, like any situations that are concerns of yours, well, that would be an opportunity or an avenue for us to do that. So I'm going to strongly encourage my fellow board members, after witnessing today what a productive, short period of time that was, that they will consider us putting in something, re-putting something in place again, so that we can interact and listen to all of you, talk with us about what your concerns are, what what's going on in your schools, and so we can have a better handle on that with the students. Also, today, I had the opportunity to listen to Dr. Graham. She gave a speech. It was overall about the district, and she touched on this being Education Week. She did an outstanding job, and I was just glad that I could be there to support her. Also, I attended the Blue Chip Luncheon, and that is always one of the that is always one of the it's a very fun event that takes place every year. Pride and patriotism. In fact, I took my son, and he had never attended. I've I've had various guests go with me, and he just thought that it was absolutely unbelievable, and he had a he had a very good evening. In fact, he he made a joke in the beginning about how I was forcing him to dress in a coat and tie to go to this. I mean, he's he's grown, obviously, and and but at the end of the evening, he says, "Mother, thank you so much for asking me to go to this. This was such a moving experience this evening." For those of you that didn't see it, I'm sorry you didn't go. For those of you that did, I know that you probably left with goosebumps like the rest of us that were there that evening. And if you didn't go, I would encourage you, by all means, to try to get a ticket next year and be sure and participate. Dr. Graham is starting some firsts, and you know, I always like when you open up a new school, or when you when you change leadership at a principal, you know, a principal at a school, or you change leadership in a district. It's interesting to kind of sit on the sidelines and watch the individual to see if they're going to put in place any long-lasting processes. Well, Dr. Graham is already doing that. For the first time that we have been in this building, on November the 8th, we had a veterans' ceremony that absolutely it gave me chills, and it was it was something that we haven't done in the past, and the fact that we did it right here, we honored all of our veterans that work in this area. We also had some veterans that just stopped by because they heard that it was going on, and I just absolutely applaud you for doing that. You know, sometimes it they say that, you know, things are right in your face, and you can't think of doing them, and we've we've never done that, and for you to do that, I just have to applaud you for that. Also, several of us attended the PACE luncheon this week, and we got to hear a young little girl tell us, not young, she's a young adult, tell us her story, and it was so moving, so touching. When Meg got up there and talked about, you know, her vision and what she's doing for the PACE group, it was just absolutely unbelievable. And I've got to give a great big shout-out for my friend Margaret Seriani, because I can now tell, she swore me to secrecy, and I couldn't tell anybody, that she was selected as one of the grand dogs. But now I can say congratulations publicly to Margaret, because they actually announced the other day who the grand dogs are. So if any of you are interested in participating in that luncheon, when they, or it's not a luncheon, it's a tea, actually, I will certainly assist you with getting tickets, and it's just a it's just a wonderful thing that is done for girls, and and it was a wonderful evening. I also had the opportunity to visit South Fort Myers. We've got great things going on at our schools, and we need to be the cheerleaders for our schools, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher.
Yes, I'd like to start by welcoming the students aboard. After listening to you in the conference room before and meeting you, I'm very excited that you're going to be working with us, and I it's a dream come true for me, because I feel like the key to our success is hearing from you guys, and you know what you need, and we need for you to tell us that. So thank you for having the interest in sharing your time and your talents with us. I heard some positive comments, again, about Dr. Graham this week, about your webinar for National Education Week, and people felt like you really sent out a message and and indicated that you support our staff. And in deference to Education Week, I want to say thank you to all of the teachers, to all of the substitute teachers, to the student the students, the assistants, and our parent partners for taking part in educating our most precious commodity, our kids. I also had the opportunity to attend veterans' ceremonies, but they weren't here. One was at Gulf Middle School, and the other one was at Skyline Elementary, and they also gave goosebumps. Pride and patriotism. If you've never attended, next November, make it an effort, because it really is an amazing tribute to our veterans who are responsible for our freedoms. And I also was happy to attend the PACE luncheon, and I'm delighted to be a member of their advisory board and a believing-in-girl supporter. They're doing great work there. They are, with the help of Ms. Coates and her staff, really beefing up their academics to make the girls even more successful in more ways, so thank you for that. And lastly, I just want to say thanks for the opportunity to serve as the chairman of this board for the past two years. It's been an adventure. It's been time well-spent connecting with schools, families, and and the community, and has led to a lot of personal growth. So I will continue to support the board and the superintendent as we move forward with the focus on children as our number-one priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Within the last week, I had an opportunity to be with Mrs. Scott, the governor's wife, at Tice Elementary, along with Dr. Graham and Dr. Jones, and there were several others there, as she read to students, pre-K and kindergarten students. I think she said she spoke four or five different languages, and so she was trying to communicate with with the kids in Spanish, and had somebody reading in Spanish with her from the books, and the kids really enjoyed it, and of course, they they didn't know who she was or who her husband was. But that was probably to be expected, but we appreciated her being there and participating in in activities in that school that are really taking off in terms of the dual-language program going on with English and Spanish speaking. So it was great to have her here, and we really appreciate that. I'm also pleased to have met you guys tonight, the students, and look forward to your being back with us as many times as possible. I hope after tonight, you're still willing to come back. Sometimes we deal with subjects that are not comfortable to deal with, or that we have differences of opinion about, but that's okay. That's what we're here for, is to share different ideas, and and that's important for you to understand as you consider entering the the political world or becoming active citizens as you grow into full adulthood and and get into the work world yourself. So we're tickled to death to have you here and appreciate the extra effort you are making in order to be a part of this, and look forward to your ongoing participation. I, too, happened to attend the Blue Chip Luncheon last week, which is about entrepreneurs, entrepreneurship, and hardship, and the cases that they bring forward are really they make you think about the kind of commitment it takes to be in a business by yourself and overcome some of the obstacles, physical, financial, and otherwise, that the people have dealt with. So it's I always enjoy that that event, and I would encourage any others who don't attend to to make an opportunity to attend that when it comes up next year. I want to thank those who voted for me this evening. I I want to assure everybody up here that I am committed to the students and their well-being, to our staff, and that they have everything they need, and to our community as a whole, that this school district provides for them at the highest level of education possible, the young people that they send to our care. I have been dedicated to that since I've been on this board and before. That will never change, and I intend to work productively with everybody up here and all members of staff throughout this upcoming year, so that we move forward, and as Mr. Armstrong says, stop staring in the rearview mirror and start looking through the windshield, see where we're going and how we're going to get there together, because it will mean we have to work together. So I appreciate this opportunity. Mr. Martin, do you have any board member or attorney comments tonight?
None this evening, sir. Thank you.
Or board member comments? Dr. Graham?
I just want to remind everybody, it is American Education Week, as Ms. Fisher said, and in the outline, if you go online and look at what American Education Week is all about, tomorrow is for support personnel. So I just want to publicly thank all those non-instructional folks we have that honestly keep things going in a lot of ways, literally and figuratively. So we are grateful for all our staff, including our substitutes, and tomorrow is dedicated as part of American Education Week to support personnel, so thank you to them. I had a grand time with Marshall Bauer this week. He he scheduled a meeting with me to get me caught up on all the I was going to say antics, that wasn't the right word, all the events and activities of the foundation. And I know we say it from time to time, I'm unsure we can say it enough, the partnership that we have with the Education Foundation is unique, and and I remember when it started, and what they are doing for our students and staff in all all sorts of ways is admirable. It tells a lot about our community, and I'm grateful for that, and I just wanted to say thank you to the foundation and to Marshall for being sure I knew what they were doing. I've been on a on a roll since I got back from Washington, DC, and was challenged that we need to, in our country, make children our priority, and I've said out loud to anybody that'll listen, that I am willing to take a lot on, but I can't take on the country, but I can take on my sphere of influence, and I am going to continually remind anyone I have the opportunity to. If we could just agree on one thing, and that be that children are our priority, we could get a whole lot of things accomplished much more quickly. I've had that conversation with leadership at the county, and they're in agreement that they might take that on with us, at least my my counterpart at the county level, and so I I'm going to continue to speak to if we would get focused on the children, and I believe our board is, and I believe our our staff is. It's just amazing what we could accomplish, and they're the ones we need to accomplish it for. Having said that, I learned a statistic that was a little disturbing to me just yesterday. One point four percent of the headlines are about public education, and that's all, one point four percent. So what that says to me is that we have got to tell our story better. We don't need a better story. We just have to tell our story better, so we're going to work to that end as well. And finally, I just want to say Thanksgiving is almost here. We all have much, much to be thankful for, and I am thankful, as I say every time we meet, and I mean it sincerely, I'm thankful for this opportunity to lead this district.
Thank you. I need to ask for clarification before I talk about the next scheduled meeting. We did schedule it for December 10th, did we not?
Correct.
Okay. Our next scheduled meeting of the board is December the 10th, a special school board meeting at 2:00 PM as well, as a school board briefing meeting immediately following, and a action meeting at 6:00 PM. There are no more business come before us, so I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second?
Mr. Armstrong, Ms. Fisher, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.